I'd like to welcome you to the January 6, 2015 Village of Lost Planning Board meeting. It's 7:07 PM and I call the meeting to order. My name's Maurice Whitman. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. Our members tonight are all here. John Litten and Liz Harsho, Michael Zerler, and Rich Stephens. Our Planner is, doesn't want to join, associates, Brent Smith. Let's call him Brent White. I called him Smith for two meetings in a row. And the Liaison to the Village Board, Tom Rocco. Thank you very much. Long trip.
So it was my pleasure.
Thank you.
Walk across the street.
We have a brief agenda. There's an application from Mr. Tim Rogers, ZBA 1412. And it's a special use permit inquiry. And I'll give a quick summary that I put together and then Mr. Rogers can correct me. So Mr. Rogers is a fairly new owner of property of 36 Helting. And the previous owner had a special use permit which allowed for a second apartment. And the wording with the special use permit that he was, the Fed owner had, said that it would expire if the ownership changed. Ownership changed and we have figured out that it's illegal to have a special use permit that expires. Or it's incorrect to have a special use permit that expires. So I asked our attorney to draft a resolution to correct the special use permit so that it doesn't expire with the transfer of property, zero property. So we have that here. We'll deal with that in a moment. You have anything to add to that?
Yeah, I think point of clarity. This property has changed hands now twice. So the special use permit was issued in 1995. And the building inspector at the time attached a sentence that said the special use permit would not be transferred with ownership. I spoke with Jack Zandt. We went through the code. There's nothing in village code.
We agree with you.
Okay, great. But I think it's important to bring up that this special use permit has already transferred once.
Okay.
This is now the second owner since it was granted.
Okay, we're not arguing. Okay, that's, okay. So everybody got the resolution that our attorney sent us around?
What did that come from?
Came in email two days.
Two days? I mean, isn't this just a housekeeping?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, so there's no fees involved here?
Well, there is, we can talk about the fee in a moment. But this is the resolution that will remove the wording and make the special use permit stay with the property without regard to how many owners there are. So that's what this is. Do you see this? It's in the package there, okay.
Oh, well, I see.
Okay, yeah, it was a game today. Okay, so I'll cut to the chase and read the bottom here. And I will do this in the form of a motion. So it says here, "Now therefore, hereby resolved by Village of Lost Planning Board that the special use permit approved in 1995," and we don't have the exact date. Perhaps you have that, Ted?
I don't have that.
Okay. "And the notice of issuance of the special use permit for 36 Helting Avenue are hereby corrected by removal of the restriction providing that the special use permit shall expire upon transfer of ownership. And the special use permit is therefore deemed to continue in effect without said restriction. And two, the owner of the premises is hereby authorized to record this resolution in the land records of the Clerk of Moster County should he so desire, although this board sees no need to do so." So that is my motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
No fight now. I heard Mr. Litten first, but I think my right here is... Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so Mr. Litten?
We can fill in 20th day of November, 1995.
Thank you. I go 11th, 20th.
Yes.
Okay, so that's in here. Okay, so there was a question about the fee, whether there would be a fee for this or not, or what the fee should be. And that was our determination. We looked through our fee schedule and found that it says here, "Plan review for revisions or amendments to a permit, $125 an hour." And we've got 10 hours on this, but I would like to propose that we charge two hours at $125 an hour and...
May I say something?
In a moment, a moment.
Okay.
Yes.
I think this is a housekeeping error on our part, or I should say on the Village's part. Or on a former building inspector's part. Now, I think an applicant should be charged for a housekeeping error that was created in our, on our part. That's going to put in a new application.
Okay, so we're doing a third discussion of the motion.
Well, I thought we were there.
Well, we didn't have a second yet, so it might not need it, because it might not be a second. So I may have a second to that, please. No, so that fails. Would anybody else like to make a motion about the fee?
I would move that there is no fee. Because it's a housekeeping issue and it's within ours.
Okay. There's a second to that motion.
A second now.
All in favor?
Aye.
No?
No.
I say no, motion passes. So that's it, there is no fee. So we have, the only other business we have is continuation of the discussion of design standards and some planning board minutes to attend to. So let's do the minutes first. I know it twisted the wrong way up. Is there any, are there any comments about the December 16 draft?
No.
Mr. Litten?
No.
They have a motion to approve the draft, to adopt the draft planning board minutes for the December 16, 2014 meeting.
So move.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Come on up, Ms. White. Smith is such a...
Not right.
Personally, I know. You know, I ask you why, where is that? I'll do my best to. I apologize to you.
Thank you, thank you.
Can you accept my phone?
I accept your apology forms.
I feel like a kid in school on Monday morning who forgot to do his homework over the weekend.
Did anyone do their homework? So I got information from John Litten about what his favorite building was. But since we didn't all take pictures like we were supposed to, how about if you just tell me some good things and bad things and then I'll...
Bad things too?
Yeah, well, good things are better than bad things.
That's why you're called good.
Right.
We were first talking about, we're talking about snub nose garages.
Yes.
I never heard that term before.
Snub nose?
At first I thought, you know, I hate those things. Until I realized what I really do like is I do really like the fact that village is a very condensed product. And nowadays people want garages. And how else would you create a garage? On narrow lots or in townhouses or in any kind of shared party role, dwellings, whatever. So if, you know, the Niffen properties, what comes to mind, that begins to get developed, how's he going to put garages in with townhouses if it don't allow front loaded garages?
Well, you could have rear access. You could have an alley in the back.
Alley's are really wonderful.
They are. Give them to Savannah, Georgia.
Yeah, but they do this.
Is that what they do?
Uh huh.
They do them in many communities. It's a cake of a solution.
That's where actually in Savannah, all the utilities are back there too. Your garbage bins are back there, so you never see any of that.
That works great on the subed areas, but does it work on infill lots?
Oh, you just said infill.
Yeah.
So we'd have to write it so it wasn't for infill lots or it wasn't for already existing homes. But, you know.
So we are still divided about that one, perhaps?
Well, I don't think we're divided, just on how we solve the problem and make, and write something that fits nearly everything. We have the ZBA for the exception. Always have the ZBA. But you've got a lot of exceptions when it comes to the already existing infill lots and others.
Well, yeah, that's why we want to have design standards so we don't have exceptional things to worry about.
So this is my favorite house. It's on Main Street. And if it had a porch and was a little bit closer to the road, it would be perfect, in my opinion.
Marion Pines' house.
It's really, really pretty. It's well maintained. He's obviously doing something with the sidewalk out there. I love it. And then I took a couple more because I didn't have time to print John's favorite house. I did print the Main Street Bistro, which is here. And I don't know what this building is next to it. Moonlight Cafe, is that, is that still this?
Yeah, Moonlight Cafe is there and Ruby Blueberry.
And this is part of our Main Street. And then the reason I really printed it was because of what's next to it right now. And this is really why the design standards kind of started this conversation. Yanni's is, in my opinion, not, not great. Not great. So not everyone likes what's the new proposal for what's going up now. And that's where this conversation came from.
Not everyone can be expanded on that, perhaps?
There were conversations in definitely the ZBA, and I'm trying, I think also the Planning Board, about color and facade and type of materials used. And in my opinion, that's not really something that we can ask right now because it's not in our code.
Even the county?
Yeah, the county.
Makes suggestions.
There is a small paragraph in our code that talks about consistency with the neighborhood. But I think we should be more, we should have stronger...
Oh, yes.
Guidelines. Code, not guidelines.
I mean, Main Street is comp, is an interesting challenge because part of what makes it so, to me, lively and attractive is that there isn't any single style. Different buildings from different years have, you know, created style. And some architects take your time to sort of play off of different forms that were in your own.
Yeah, some of these have many years.
Right, and then some of them get remodeled.
Some of them are houses.
So it's, it's hard. I mean, I, when I look at Main Street, there are definitely buildings that I really like. But I'm not sure how you create design standards that would... How do you create design standards that both acknowledge the eclectic nature of your Main Street and provide room for, you know, attractive architecture and stuff?
I mean, a good example is the main course. It used to be a beautiful home. Then it became a real ugly office building. And then it went from a real ugly office to the current restaurant and whatever configurations there.
It's delicate.
It's a, it's a store.
Pressing the left.
It is. And its visual impact, I think, is very good. I like it. There'll be obviously people who don't. But I like it. I like it certainly better than the metamorphosis before it. And I barely remember the building before that. But yet that old B1 is supposed to be maintaining the look of the old houses. Eventually, there's going to be people coming in with other ideas for those buildings. We're going to wrestle.
There are a lot of houses possibly being taken down various times.
Do they?
You can see the remnants still of housing.
Yeah.
So...
There are a couple, there are still a couple of houses, that's right. Morning and Russell's is still there.
So the dilemma that you proposed, I think, is that we can come up with some standards and so on. But then some new architect 10, 15 years from now is going to come in with a plan that may not meet those standards, but may be better.
Right.
Well, that's why our documents are looking documents. If we find something better, we change. We shouldn't have to ever go again with a document that is old. You know, it's this, in the eye of the beholder thing is where I wrestle. I mean, the new building going in next to this on Main Street is completely different than... I don't see how it relates to any of the buildings that are down there. I just don't see it, but it's not my building.
So with design standards, are they... I mean, I know you gave us various ones to look at. I guess the ones that attracted me the most were the ones that had certain restrictions that seemed appropriate for new homes, such as, you know, trademark buildings. But then the other thing that seemed attractive were those that encouraged certain kinds of siding and certain kinds of massing, but not so much about specific facades and things like that. So that, so that there was freedom to create different kinds of skins, but where you place the buildings, how you size them, where you put roof lines and windows and exterior ornaments. That's the kind of stuff that seems, as well as like street skates, trees and sidewalks and stuff. That seems like for a commercial area anyway, kind of fit or sit well with flexibility.
But do those restrictions work well for residential area?
I think some can, yes.
And they don't have to be the same.
Yeah. I mean, we could say commercial areas have no step back. The buildings need to be on the sidewalk or up to the sidewalk. Residential areas wouldn't, wouldn't be that close to the sidewalk. But we may want to say, you know, the most, the least dense neighborhood, which would be the R1 district, should still be close to the sidewalk. They should still be small-ish lots, you know. Lot, lot size isn't necessarily in design standards, but they should have garages in back, perhaps. Or the cars can't park in front, which apparently used to be on code and isn't anymore. That you have to park cars before the front, behind the front facade of the house. That can all be included in residential and that makes sense there too. For new development, we could say we want alleys or something.
So it really seems like we're looking at one set of design standards for commercial areas, one set of design standards for existing residential areas, and one set of design standards for new development areas. Is that kind of how?
Well, within the residential areas we have R1, 2, and 3, right? Would there be a difference between those because there's a density? We could even fine tune it for each subcategory.
And that doesn't necessarily have to be in the design standards. I mean, we could do some of that in the regular code. But by all means, let's fix all.
I mean, we have a unique opportunity here with the Niffen property. And it's not developed. It is still all one big moist junk. We can develop things like alleys and make them work. Certainly, if it came to us now with a plan that included alleys, I don't know how we handle it. This is not, it's not anywhere within our criteria.
Well, you know, you started making suggestions about combined parking in backup.
Yes. I'm very big on that.
Yeah, well, I think that's a great idea. And that is an act. It's the same deal. It's, it's moving everything in the back and having, having a through access to... And it'd be great if it could be, the way alleys work in communities where this was part of the development scheme is that there's a driveway on either end of a block. And cars and trucks go in there, with garages often below the houses.
So the garbage truck goes back and forth through there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or it's just one way, yeah. It's a beautiful thing. Many cities have that.
Baltimore.
Look, Maurice referred to, we've talked a long time about taking the backs of all commercial properties and just erase property lines. And just saying, why do we have five foot setbacks? Or what, 10% setback? 10% of a lot, that's a crazy number in the setback. And why don't we use that to create better parking layouts? Create these alleyways and service alleys and, you know.
In the new...
Why not?
In the new parking guidelines that were passed last year, we do encourage joint parking areas. But I think you're saying even more than that, that sounds great.
Yeah, I mean, we already, we have been trying to encourage it for years.
Yeah.
There's usually resistance because of the lot size and, you know, conditions and so forth.
Can't there be self-imposed restrictions on properties, for instance, via a homeowners association that often they're found with townhouse subdivisions?
But how would that affect us?
Well, it would end up, they could be more strict than what the zoning laws require. I don't think they can be less.
Right.
But you know, they say, how do you eat an elephant? The answer is point by your tongue.
My tongue.
How do we eat this elephant? Because to me, I see this as an elephant. I see this as such a big cumbersome undertaking to pick up these design elements. Is that, you know, what's the first bite? Because the more bites we take out of it, eventually the elephant gets eaten.
We could split it up.
So I mean, if we're going to talk about the commercials, I'll make the first bite.
I have to have a metaphor.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know, give me something else. Bunny rabbit, you know, I don't know. I don't need PETA, all right?
Yeah. So if we split it up into commercial and residential, you want to talk about commercial first?
Well, I'm just saying, when we start to look at it, it's like, let's take a look at the commercial and say, let's get rid of that rear lawn setback restriction. It doesn't make any sense. Everything, you know, two times we've had a look at it, our own attorney couldn't figure out what we were doing with it. It was so poorly written. But yet there it sits.
Well, I can see if commercial is, is backing up to commercial. But what happens when you have commercial backing up to residential? You still, I would still think that there should be some sort of a setback.
Well, that's something we could address in the design standards. Isn't that part of the code? I mean, or is that a code change?
I, Liz, I would take that if it was trying to create a new commercial zone against an old residential zone. But anybody who, you know, who buys a house now that backs up to a commercial knows what they're buying. Buying backing up to a commercial. I think it was more important to develop these debt...
Or what happens if something has changed hands in the meantime? And you've been there for 20 or 30 years. And then its use, whatever your adjoining owner is, has changed hands and they want to turn it into commercial. I think there should be a setback if commercial backs up to residential.
I think that's in the code now, so...
Yes, it is. So what I'm getting at is I don't want to just blanket statement say, "Commercial doesn't have any setback." I think there are circumstances where you'd still want it.
No, I think what we're going to do is look at setbacks in the commercial. What do we want there?
Yeah.
Do we want alleyways or do we want green spaces or do we want... I mean, my first home, I was able to convince my wife that we should sell it because they kept on, we're up against the commercial zone and they could put a Chinese restaurant in the house next door to us. And if you want to smell cooking onions all day, let's stick around here until they do.
Or elephants or cats.
Or elephants. The cats. I mean, that's why I brought that up. I just, let's take a look at that part of the zone and say, it's, it's archaic. I don't know, I don't know why it exists. A couple times we did it with Augusta. We could, George and, we said we were betting around George's bar, looking for what they even, how they even made it.
But we're discussing design standards, but that would involve a code change, which is...
But design standards are going to be...
Are going to be part of the change.
Okay, all right, okay.
Is that the way you foresee it?
Yeah, I, I think...
These are codified?
Yeah, it certainly would be, in my opinion. And this board's job is to be looking at the code and seeing where it's wrong. And I'm helping me...
And in executing it once it's done. And without these standards being codified, we have no say. We can't impose anything that's not in the code on that front.
True. Oh, yeah, yeah, right. Unless the code somehow references, I mean, we have to like...
Well, but if, so if it's in the code, if there's a guideline or something like that.
It gets lost.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
It gets lost.
No, you're right. No, I'm not objecting to it, just...
I mean, of course, the Village Board will have to make that decision. But we can certainly make suggestions, not only in design standards, but also if something is wrong in the code, great, I'll write down and we'll fix it.
Yeah, we often don't run upon that until we have someone making that. Because, you know, what we're going with our backyard setback. There we go.
Well, we had that with the...
Augusta.
With the hookah bar too.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's...
We had it with Masi with the driveways.
Well, that's, that's the, it isn't only the driveway, but it was, it was the, whatever was in the back and the refuse crib and the propane tanks and...
And that one.
And the view from, from the residence in the back.
Now, there was a perfect site with interconnecting backyards.
Yeah.
Parking lots would have been great.
That could have really...
They could have made one area for dumpsters. That would work fine. Most of the people we can't put these service roads in the present configuration of the houses, but, you know. And then based on what happens on January 27th, we might know what's going to happen. Another big piece of real estate in the village, you know. Whether that's going to get saved or is that going to be out there on the open market? The middle school.
So then do we want to concentrate on commercial first? Do we want to...
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
That's one that has the broadest impact.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we're... I'm thinking that will probably end up, I mean, my sense is that it's going to be hard to do a one size fits all for some things. Because we have essentially three commercial zones and they have been built out in different kinds of ways. So some of this stuff may be more applicable to some parts and others, but...
And the B3 zone was just redone?
Just redone, yeah. We do have, and there was quite a lot of design standards in there now.
It would be nice to look at, see what we could tell that into the rest of them.
Yeah.
So it makes sense.
So this could be a short discussion and I could give you more homework now that the holidays are over.
Well, we have a Wednesday.
It is time. I think it's not calling April, it's spring.
Christmas?
Valentine's Day coming next.
MLK is that?
MLK is right.
So then, since we have the B3 zoning that was just redone, it's called the North Chestnut Gateway District now. Let's look at that for our next meeting and decide what we like that can go on into the rest of commercial.
Is that, did you send us a copy of that or were you...
I can send you, I think you may have gotten it today, but I'll, I'll send you a copy.
It's not online yet?
It is online.
It is online. It's in the code. So, yeah, it's in the code.
It's in the E code.
Yeah.
I thought there was another... I thought there was another, like a presentation of, from the consultants.
Oh, that?
That was before me, but I can find it.
What do you know about that?
No, I think, well, I know that he, before it was finalized, he had put together a, actually written document that's probably in the mayor's office if it's not in the mayor's office.
I probably haven't.
And so there might be a final version of that.
Okay. That's, that's my homework. I'll send you the presentation.
Okay.
So we're gonna discuss this next meeting, right? We didn't get to that.
I think we can discuss it next meeting. I don't know, Mr. Chairman?
Well, what are we gonna do? We're gonna look over the code for the, what's it called? Chestnut?
No, Chestnut Gateway District.
Gateway District. NCGC, GD. Sure, we could, we could do it next meeting. Now, next meeting we have Mr. Cafrey's. And I don't know if there was something else. What happened to the applicant on North Manhattan 21?
Um, a parent is ill and so he's holding.
Okay.
So I think we just get that one because it's.
My, my application isn't working. It's based on.
It's not all about you, Rich.
Hey, it's okay, it's okay.
Okay, so.
It's a birthday, it's a birthday to you.